All right, good evening. I'd like to call the July 8th Committee of the whole meeting to order. Clerk Boak, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Palibetoglu, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Cost, Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Jackson. Five members present, you have a quorum of council.
Thank you. Okay, we're to the minutes of June 24th meeting. Councilman Cost, do you mind making a motion on those?
I would make a motion to move the June 24th, 2024 meeting minutes as written.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. All right, at this point in the agenda, we are at public comment for agenda items. There's anybody in the public that would like to come down to the well, state your name for the record, and you will have up to three minutes.
I live at 2536 Windbreak in Lansing, Ward 2, Mr. Garza. I'm an LBW customer and a Lansing resident. BWL will be presenting its budget as well as its capital forecast tonight. I am speaking to the last chart of the capital portfolio and budget and forecast that refers to a FYI 2025 to 2030 Clean Energy Spending Plan. Note, BWL didn't use the word cleaner, it said clean energy. Clean energy is popularly understood as energy that does not add CO2 or pollutants to the air quality. Gas, aka methane, is not clean. That's why BWL had to get an air permit, limiting the amount of greenhouse gases and pollution its proposed rice plant can spew into the air. I would characterize this as deceptive and a little greenwashing, calling a gas plant clean. The chart at the end, talking about the clean energy projects, does not cover 2025 to 2030. It only covers up to 2028. There isn't even a column for 29 or 30. For 28, there are no entries for any renewable project. Currently, BWL generates only 13% of its electricity with renewables, and by adding the planned projects, will only bring it up to 17%. And BWL is supposedly going to reach 17...oh. We don't, we're not sure how it's going to meet its goals for meeting the state renewable portfolio standard. The chart also shows that 314 million will be spent on renewables and storage, but some 371 million will go to building a gas plant. So that's more than 50% of the clean energy quote/unquote going to a gas plant. BWL obtained authorization for up to 750 million. It's committed less than that. What are they going to do with the rest? How come there's nothing for those two years? I would just request that this council ask one or more of these questions. Thank you.
Do we have any additional public comment?
Yes. Hi, I'm Randy Dykes. I live at 418 North Sycamore in the 4th Ward, and I'm also president of the nonprofit Capital Your Friends in the Environment, president of the board. So I spent some time reviewing the documents that were in the information packet before you tonight, and some questions leapt out at me about the clean energy projects that were mentioned there. And so I have a list of questions that I hope you ask. Why does BWL continue to designate the rice plant a clean energy project when it will generate high levels of hazardous air pollutants and contribute tons of greenhouse gases to the atmosphere? Over the next four years, according to the chart, BWL will spend 170 million on the dirty rice plant. At the same time, they're spending about 100 million on real clean energy projects. Why are they not spending more on renewables in a clean energy plan, instead spending the majority of it on a dirty rice plant? What alternatives to the dirty rice plant did BWL management consider before landing on that option in 2023? One thing leapt out at me, why are there no wind projects in the clean energy plan? Has BWL given up on wind? Are they not adding any more to their portfolio? How is BWL going to meet the renewable energy requirements of the new state law that was passed at the end of 2023 if it keeps on building fossil fuel plants that continue to spill greenhouse gases into the atmosphere? Would BWL be willing to commit to building no more fossil fuel plants? BWL has cited the clean energy projects for the 7% electricity rate increase that it plans to impose later this year. Yet we see that almost two-thirds of their plan, their clean energy plan, is for a dirty rice plant, which means that the real culprit for the energy or for the rate increase is not clean energy, it's fossil fuel plant. Did BWL look into clean energy production tax credits and then clean energy investment tax credits that are available through the Inflation Reduction Act? These are very substantial credits that only zero greenhouse gas emission projects are eligible for. For example, if they build battery storage on the former Erickson site and wind or solar plus storage, they qualify them for an investment tax credit for 30 to 50% of their investment. Or they can take a production tax credit of $33 per megawatt hour of energy produced. If BWL did not take these tax incentives into account, why not? The BWL Board of Commissioners is not seen fit to ask these questions. They merely rubber stamp the reports as they come to them from BWL management. City Council may not have a direct governance role, but I call on you to exercise your diligence in asking these questions of BWL management when they come before you tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marshall Claboe. I'm a 4th Ward resident, city of Lansing, BWL Rate Pay member, concerned citizen of the capital city of the Great Lakes State, Lansing. Trying times we find ourselves, precarious situation arising once again, BWL wanting to build gas plant. Only five, six years ago, BWL themselves stated 99.9% chance this was our last gas plant built. Well, here we are, fighting another 170 million minimum dollar investment into fossil fuel infrastructure in the year 2024. I implore city council, plus the mayor, hope he watches the recordings, to request written explanations of if other options were requested to meet the battery needs or the energy needs of the battery plant. That is the underlying elephant in the room here. We need, we have this battery plant that's promised jobs, promised investment. We need power to power the batteries. It's environmental disaster unfolding. The problems at bay listed below, lack of information's been shared. BWL really has shared little to nothing about this clean energy plan that includes a majority fossil fuel infrastructure that we've heard tonight. Air emissions aren't being monitored. Our small little nonprofit of feisty activists is having to pay tens of thousands of dollars for air monitoring that Eagle, BWL, the federal government, the city, won't pay for. We're investing in obsolete technology. What is the stranded cost of these assets going to be? There was a 2018 investment that's going to be a stranded asset? We have to stop burning these fuels by 2035 if we're going to have a chance to meet our climate goals. We're talking about the kids' future here. Lastly, BWL often speaks to reliability. Is gas the most reliable fuel in a trying world when fossil fuel investment is going down, prices of solar is dropping, wind's dropping? What's the price of gas going to be in five, 10, 15 years? It's only going to increase. I don't think it's going to decrease. And if it decreases, that means we've exceeded our limits. So I leave you with this. These were my feelings upon hearing that BWL was granted the air permit by Eagle. Broken soul, power that begates, underneath broken dreams, the masters hold the key. But little do they see a revolution unfolding within. Only then we can win. They will not break or bleed, for we must succeed. To keep us out is the fight. Blow by blow, we grow and show, a force we fight to mend their slight. Lost without a home, they burn and bomb and scream all told. Speak, we sing, our songs will ring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Kermit. I'm a citizen living on the west side, not a member of Lansing itself, but on the west side, the Millet neighborhood. I have two sons living within Lansing, so I do have some credibility as far as that goes. I would like to just reiterate and reinforce what you've heard from Randy and the others, that there are questions that BWL needs to answer, and only you have the authority to ask those questions. BWL basically has no oversight. Their own board is basically a rubber stamp. When this proposed plant, the rice plant, which has since been approved, it never went through any public review. It didn't, they don't have to. The board pretty much is free to whatever they like because those people who are sitting in your chair and others are not asking the questions and not taking the responsibility to protect the citizens which you represent. We're frustrated and feel victimized living where we do because we're just west of the BWL, and we're not only going to have to face an increase of hazardous air pollution up to 500,000 pounds a year, if it's run all the time, it probably won't be, but it's a significant increase in hazardous air pollution. And prior to that, we had to undergo a rigorous effort to find out from BWL, from BWL how much of our private wells were contaminated by the coal ash ponds that were unregulated and unlined for over 45 years. And that's an ongoing battle that we yet have because it, and again, there's very little oversight. Eagle approved the air permit because they had no other resource. When we found out that the air monitoring that will be required by BWL means very little in terms of regulation and compliance. The air monitoring that they currently have is there to warn citizens when the levels get too high. It's not to hold BWL accountable. So I'm here to urge you not only to ask those questions, but when the time comes for a renewed charter, is ask you to look very sincerely and at what is going to take to rein BWL in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nicholas Andy from the old Everett neighborhood, president of its association as well. Want to speak on Agenda Item B, which is Board of Water and Light Fiscal Year 2025 Budget and Capital Forecast. As you've been hearing from the audience, the BWL apparently is approved of a rice plant, which is just incredible, which is something I haven't heard of without asking people. Again, I've not heard of that, so where's the transparency on that? And also, clean energy? I don't, designating natural gas as clean energy? I mean, yeah, it doesn't have the same amount of carbon emissions as coal or oil, but it still has quite a bit of emissions, and it's not exactly a clean energy source. And they're not exactly spending most of their money on actual clean energy sources like, what was, like renewables, like solar and wind, which are fairly clean resources. Then compare this, then you've got, but then they is, and the thing is with, they're at their lowest price point, so it's easily affordable to fully switch to that. But natural gases are probably going to end up becoming obsolete year after, over the years. And who knows how expensive it's going to get over the years and to the point where the Board of Water and Light can't afford it. Honestly, I know this sounds weird of me to say something about trusting the government since I don't normally trust the state or corporations that much, but I believe that the Board of Water and Light should end up becoming, since the charter commissions opened, it should fully become a city government department so that they can actually have more, so that the government and as well as the people can actually have more oversight over them, and so they don't step out of line as much. Which, I mean, considering that they've already built a fricking power station over an old park and garden near downtown and REO town, it's, it just shows how very out of control the Board of Water and Light can be. And I believe that with, if it was a full government department, let's just call it Lansing Department of Energy, maybe it would have actual government, maybe the government would have more oversight over them and could regulate them easier. I know it's weird of me to say this, but I think that there should be more regulations on this, and the people should have more oversight over certain things because rice plants that I haven't heard of, really, and not spending enough money on renewables, do better, BWL.
Thank you.
Just three very quick points on the Board of Water and Light issue. First off, we hear about renewables, we hear about water. No, no, isn't water a renewable still? About what? Why aren't we doing more with water along with wind and solar? I believe if you do your research, you will find that in the industry, natural gas is considered an obsolete form of creating energy at this point in time. So we're putting 175 million dollars into what will essentially be an obsolete plant before it's ever constructed, and we're doing it on the backs of our rate payers. And then lastly, I think that the others have made a very good point, and that is that the Board of Water and Light's Board of Commissioners is essentially dysfunctional and acts simply as rubber stamp. They don't really ask any questions, they don't ever challenge anything, they just sit back and say, okay, hey, fine, yep, let's rate increase again, and let's hit the public with another 7% for electric, another, what, 5% for water and sewer? And, you know, so what? They can afford it. Maybe they can't eat that week, or maybe they can't pay their cable bill or whatever else that week, but they can afford to pay more to the Board of Water and Light for obsolete functions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? All right. Seeing no more.
Good evening. My name's Ron Peterson. Last year, BWL leaders rolled out their Clean Energy Plan that stated they would have 50% clean energy portfolio by 2030. This plan called for 750 million dollars to be spent to add 650 megawatts of green energy. This is exactly where we should be going, this was great news, but we're not. Shockingly, their newly released four-year budget plan, which puts them halfway to their 10-year plan that they just announced a year ago, is very much lagging on money for clean energy projects. By 2028, we'll be just two years from the promised 50% clean energy portfolio. So where do we stand? In the new budget proposal through 2028, by far, most BWL's new project dollars are earmarked for still another high polluting gas plant. It'll be the third gas plant in just 13 years. Currently, only 13% of BWL's energy is from green sources. We're a long, long way from 50. So what's this portfolio have in it? It has $0 for wind energy when they said that there'd be 238 megawatts of wind energy in their last year's Clean Energy Plan. Where is it? It's not happening. Their proposal for solar is barely one-third of their money for the budget through 2028. Yet BWL has pledged 270 megawatts of solar energy. They're badly underfunding solar energy and not funding any wind energy through 2028. Now, the BWL is planning a 7% rate hike, and they say by 2028, they're going to generate 73 million dollars in revenue for wholesale electricity, instead of using battery storage to use it locally and keep the rates down here. Will you hold BWL leaders accountable when they complete the flop on their own clean energy plan? Please do everything in your power for our children and our grandchildren to push BWL for the green plan that they have promised us and stop their reliance on fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? Seeing no further public comment, we did not have anybody sign up online to speak as well, so we will move on down to Presentation B. We have a presentation, Board of Water and Light Fiscal Year 2025 Budget and Capital Forecast for Fiscal Years 2025 to 202030. We have Heather Shoa and Dick Pefley, come on down to the well, please. I'd like to say that we, as council, received three different email communications from our constituents, and then it looks like Brianna Pugh of the Government and Community Relations Manager, she responded to one of them regarding the rice plant. Well, thanks for being here today, you guys. I'll open it up to you, do your presentation, and then we'll open up to the rest of council for questions.
Thank you, council members. Heather will do the presentation and we'll answer questions as needed.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Thank you for having us. I'm going to give a few highlights. They should flow and follow the presentation items that you had in the packet. Couple key reminders, when we do put our budget and forecast together, we have some key objectives. Couple key ones that I'd like to just refresh and remind, maintain our AA- and AA3 ratings with our rating agencies, and that is, also includes two covenants of days cash on hand. So our operating budget has a requirement per our commissioner governance policy for 149 days for next fiscal, this fiscal year, and the budget provides us with 160. Our debt service coverage of two times is also met with this budget at 2.16, which is what is forecasted. Also, and as important, is to generate an adequate return on assets. This allows us to reinvest in our infrastructure to continue to provide safe, reliable, and affordable utility services. Our target through the forecast period is just under 4%, 3.97, with the fiscal '25 operating year being budgeted at 2.9%. Some key assumptions that went into the forecast, but I'll speak to the ones that are more so through next operating cycle. We typically put together a conservative budget. We have good progress and track record of meeting and/or exceeding the budgets. A key item, the wholesale market, the pricing is volatile, so a key assumption is that the prices forecasted hold through the year. It does include our clean energy projects and expected commercial operation dates, which most of these are the end of '26 and early 2027. It does also continue to support our water main replacement, continuing to ramp up to eight miles per year, and the forecast projects us getting there in fiscal '29. It does not include any Eckert and Erickson decommissioning costs. Those would be as determined, we've not done any assessments on that, so we would do that as determined and include those in an updated forecast. It also does assume that the rate increases that we will be bringing forward in a public meeting on August, on August 20th, to be exact, that they are approved as proposed. First item, our fiscal '25 income statement. We do have revenues shown for all four utilities, just over 475 million. Our fuel and purchased power represent nearly half of our cost. That is due to us generating our own energy and continue, as we continue to transition to renewable sources. Our return on equity is budgeted at 28 million for fiscal '25. Our net income, again, which is reinvested into our infrastructure, is budgeted at 12.6 million for the operating year. Moving on to the cash flow, a couple items to point out there. There is a line for borrowing. That is the proceeds that we will reimburse ourselves as we spend for the program and the initiatives. We did go, earlier this year, we issued 2024 A-bonds, and that borrowing is not new borrowing, it's what we just did this fiscal year. Also, the commodity cost adjustments, that's our public, our PSCR, which is recouped for increased fuel cost. That's another item on the cash flow. And then also, it does show grants and tax credits, and this is the amount that we're expected to receive in this fiscal year. We did receive for the clean energy projects, specifically at our Delta Energy Park location, we've received a grant from MPSC of 12 million dollars. And also, we are maximizing all the eligible costs that we can through the IRA as well. And when I get to that slide later on, we are estimating about 40 million dollars of eligible cost that will be reimbursed through the IRA. Moving on to the capital plan, we do show this, two different breakdowns by utility and by location, and this should look familiar. On average, our typical annual spend is nearly 80 million dollars. Electric, TND, transmission and distribution continues to be the largest spend in our capital portfolio. This is to continue to get us out of Eckert and reinforce, we have a major transmission line reinforcement project for the next few years, and then three new substations, and those are detailed out as well. Also, as stated earlier, our water, TND, 15 million dollars for fiscal '25, and then as we ramp up to the eight miles, that increases to 23 million by 2030. And then additionally, we did, I'm sorry, one thing that typically is asked is on the breakdown of the slide, common and other, is typically new technology projects. So a key one we're implementing right now is Workday, our new human resource information system. And then operational technology, the cyber resiliency to support our production plants, and then our corporate side as well. So cyber is a big spend, network hardening and other as well. And the last slide does break down the clean energy program by project. These are, as the budget was put together in May, and we continue to negotiate and work with the locations. So these locations are not all finalized yet, but this was our plan and this is what we're working towards. And again, we have the estimated IRA that will help offset this, a 40 million, and then the MPSC grant, and we continue to pursue additional grants as they come up as well. That concludes my planned remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'll open up for questions from council. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I do have a few questions, so please bear with me. Because honestly, we all have questions that really don't get answered. I read from a recent Pulse article that Mr. Harris wrote, and I know you probably didn't really write it, Calvin, but it's cool, and Mr. Burns and some other person, when they said at the end, first, don't go to Councilman Jackson about renewables. "Don't go to Councilman Jackson about renewable. Come to Board Water and Light, because we have open meetings, and that's what public power is about, open meetings and transparency and giving the information." So I know, ever since I became aware that since 2018, people have not been getting answers when they ask for specific things. And I can pull up receipts of asking and getting the runaround. So when you act like we get answers easily, that's not true. So I got a lot of questions now because I know we can get some answers. Starting with, I'll go back because I asked it before. Isn't it true that natural gas is not a clean energy? Mr. Pefley.
We go by the definition of state, so you can look it up on the state website, and that's the definition we follow. Or we would be happy to send that to you.
Okay. So is that a yes or no?
That's, you know, you get it off the state website.
Is your attorney telling you not to answer that?
No, my attorney's not here.
Okay. So do you think, no, Board Water and Light, I'm not going to even, it's not personal. Nothing is personal. It's just that it's really hard from the runaround we got. I guess I'm asking you, do you think that natural gas is a clean energy or not?
It's not for me to say.
Okay. So in the bond language that you put, Board Water and Light put that passed, renewable energy bond proposal that said this money is going to be used for renewable clean energy. But yet, most of the money is used for the natural gas plant. And back, last time I asked you, you admitted that the natural gas plant, natural gas is not a clean energy, and that you were not aware of the effects that it will have burning the rice plant. Is that still true?
I'm sorry, I don't recall that conversation.
Really? Okay. Do you recall the bond language that says clean renewable energy?
Yes.
All right.
If I may, it also says and other system improvements.
Exactly. Other system improvements. So if the headline is clean renewable energy, but most of it is not clean and renewable energy, would that be misleading and false?
We don't believe it's false.
You don't? Okay. So you also, that sounds like you believe that clean energy, excuse me, that natural gas is clean. That's what it sounds like. If you don't believe that, that language is false. That means you believe that clean energy includes natural gas.
Those are your words, not mine, council member.
That's because you won't answer anything. You're just saying that.
Well, I can help you a little bit. I believe natural gas is cleaner than the coal that we used to have.
Okay. But don't you remember when I asked you that you admitted that you do not know the extra effects that the rice plant will have? As far as when it burns the natural gas and the emissions and the leaks that go throughout and the effects that it has on the environment? Do you remember that?
No, I do not.
Okay. Do you remember when we had the RFP rollout? That was a meeting that was open to the public, which I came to because I was very curious. Do you remember that meeting?
Yes, I do.
Do you remember at that meeting when no board members asked any questions about rice plant or that, or anything related to the big, huge rollout that's a big, huge deal that we're talking about? Do you remember that?
Vaguely, yes.
Okay. So you remember that the board members didn't ask questions. Did you know whether the board members even knew what a rice plant was when you said that? Because I didn't know. You said, "We got this right. We're going to talk about these proposals from the clean energy RFP that we have. You know, we got this, that we're going to do in the future, the future. And we got this rice plant that's coming up. Like, oh, rice plant. I wonder what that is." Do you remember, like, just introducing it as a rice plant?
No, I do not.
Okay. Have you ever explained prior to, I guess, the rollout or any point to the board of commissioners what like a rice plant really is?
Yes, I have.
And did they ever vote on anything? Because I was at that meeting, you might not remember, but I remember you told everybody what the plan was. We had ninety-six proposals. We had this much proposed energy, and here's what we're going to do, a rice plant. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
So you made that decision.
No, the board voted on that.
When did they vote?
They voted on that in the budget. It's approved in the budget.
Okay. So they voted on the budget. Did they ask questions then?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Interesting. You mentioned that the reason for the rice plant is so that you can generate new electricity mostly for the battery plant. That's kind of what it sounded like.
That's not correct.
Okay. Because you need, we need more generation of power, right?
No, we don't. We need the backup for the renewable portfolios, what the rice plant is for.
Okay. Is that because we don't generate enough now?
No, it's because the renewable portfolio is intermittent. And so the rice engines back that up. There's no solar at night, so you potentially can run them at night.
So if we need to produce more energy, why are we selling our energy out of state?
I'm not aware that we sell any energy out of state. We put it on MISO.
Okay.
The market, where it goes, once it's on the grid, we don't know where it goes. But the grid is part of the government MISO infrastructure.
All right, fine. Why do we sell our energy to the grid if we need energy?
Because you size your facility for the hottest day, and it's not always the hottest day. So when you don't have the hottest day, you take and generate that surplus energy to help lower the customers' bills. You size it for July and August, but in January you have a low load, so you take the opportunity during those low loads.
Okay. Because I'm looking at the wholesale amount of energy that we, the money amount, and it's sixty-seven thousand, no, sixty-seven million, seven-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars.
Take your word for it.
I mean, it's on here, so. You're the guy. You're the only guy that really can answer any of these questions that everybody wants to know. So you're in a really tough spot.
Not.
All right. So all of that generation, since we're investing in battery, couldn't we use some of that power and store it for the warm days instead of something else?
Absolutely. That's correct.
All right. So wouldn't that be an alternative source of, I guess, more power? If we kept the power that we generated and use it instead of making new natural gas plants?
Since storage discharge on a battery is four hours. In January, we had two hours of solar, so you'd have ran out the first day. But we are building battery technology at two locations.
Isn't it true that the General Motors agreed that they would only receive and use renewable energy for their new battery plant?
No, that's not correct. As far as I know, they have not requested a hundred percent renewable energy from us at this time. If they do, we'll provide it.
Interesting. So how are we going to achieve our aggressive energy goals? And this question has came up a bunch of times, so I'm sure that you have a bunch of different answers. But how are we going to achieve our energy goals that we're already behind on if we're adding more natural gas, whatever, dirty fossil fuels, which is going to put us further behind? How are we going to, how are we going to overcome the gap that we're creating and widening as we keep making these projects?
Well, behind is your words, sir. We are currently ahead of schedule, and all of our numbers are submitted to the state and the regulatory industry that monitors us. And so we're not behind, and we don't plan on getting behind.
I understand that you legally may not have to, like, actually do renewable energy. It's just, you know, wanted by the governor. And I'm, I'm sure that the governor will be gone someday, and, and maybe there'll be a different president that will promote fossil fuels. But my point is, is that 2030, what are we supposed to be at?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. And where are we at now? Thirteen, right?
No, that's not correct.
Where are we at now?
We're higher than that, and we'd be glad to submit that to you in writing.
Can you just tell us?
It's, I don't have the exact number, and since you're wanting to dot i's and cross t's, I want to be very accurate with you.
Well, how about a range? Because this is like the biggest goal, the biggest aggressive goal that you guys have been promoting everywhere.
We'll be at fifty percent by 2030.
See, that answer, no offense, and again, this isn't personal. But that answer is not an answer because it's just saying what the goal is, but it's not how we're going to get there, especially when we're adding more natural gas.
Well, you're incorrect again because it is the law, and you have to comply with the law, and we do comply with the law. The governor's isn't a wish list. My clean energy program is the law.
Sure, it's the law now, but will it be the law in a couple of years from now? Or if President Trump becomes president, will it be the law?
I'll defer to you on that. But bottom line is, is that we are in compliance with the current law, and we plan on staying there.
Okay. So in six years from now, when, and I'm looking at the timeline here, it says next year is supposed to be battery and solar. Two thousand twenty-six is supposed to be the gas plant. And then it says more battery and solar, and then it says future projects, 2028. So we only have six years left until fifty percent. And I know that we're not even halfway there. In fact, the last numbers that I was aware of like a year ago, we're at approximately thirteen percent. And you don't know. I just think I read your material. And I say you, I mean Board Water and Light.
We know exactly where we're at, and we're happy to provide that to you. But we're going to do it in a document that will be presented to you, not in a verbal conversation.
Councilman Jackson, I just want to remind you that we do have something else on, as a presentation.
Yeah. The only problem is, and I appreciate that, again, this is our, these are the only questions because you're going to provide documentation, maybe, and then.
Not maybe. If you, you ask me a specific question, if you want to follow up on it, you'll have it. And I always do that for the councils. You just don't like the answers you're hearing.
No. It's just that it seems like you don't even know the answers.
I do know the answers, but I dot i's and cross t's when I deal with you.
You just don't want to tell me. Can you give me a range?
Councilman Jackson, I don't want to go back and forth on this. You know, please include me in all this communication, so I will make sure you receive them as well. Councilman Jackson.
Okay. Thank you. I'll move on. What happened to the ten-year plan that was talked about last year in July?
This is, this is the first part of it.
This is the first part of it?
Right. We have not, we have a ten-year plan, we have estimates. But this is our first phase of it. So as we get this, I mean, seven separate projects at once, along with our eighty-to-ninety-million-dollar capital plan, that's a lot to undergo. So we do have two-phase plan. Plus, as new technology comes out continually, we want to make sure that we're maximizing what's out there and available.
Okay. Were you, do you, does the Board Water and Light remember its last ten-year plan?
Yes.
Do you recall in that plan, it said basically it conceived no new natural gas or fossil fuels being built in that last ten-year plan?
I do, yes.
Okay. You remember that?
Yep.
And then, so it's clear that that ten-year plan's not being followed, right?
No, things changed. There was economic development, which is a good thing for the city. And so we changed with the times.
Okay. So what would stop you from changing with the times again?
Well, you have to still comply with the law. It wasn't the law back then. The law is.
But it was still the same plan. Like, the law now is what Board Water and Light's aggressive renewable energy plan was. It was the same numbers, fifty percent by 2030, right? It's been that way even before the law, right?
Correct. And again, we plan on meeting that goal. And we haven't missed our goals in the past. We have been ahead of every state mandate goal. We had a renewable portfolio standard before it was even the law.
So since there's only six years till that.
Yes.
Less than that. So how would any industry, any utility be able to, within six years, knowing that you're proposing this gas plant also, which is going to even make it harder? How would any utility be able to account for, I would say, thirty percent more? Because we're probably like at, what, twenty, thirty? No, no, fifteen percent, twenty percent at the most? How are you going to generate and switch it so that it gets to fifty percent without a plan that's in place now? Besides adding natural gas?
Yeah. No, we have a plan to build out the solar that we just talked previously about that will get us to where we need to be.
So you're going to have a solar array that's going to generate, I mean, I don't know all the megawatt math here, but that's going to change, that's going to basically flip the whole portfolios. Because, because the gas plant, my understanding, is the biggest, the biggest thing in the plan. And it's, it by far is more than the proposed renewable energy. The natural gas is more, the renewable energy is less in this plan. So how would that make it switch to its fifty percent?
Because you're looking at them as nameplate ratings at a hundred percent capacity, and that's not how they're operated. The gas plant is a backup supply for you. In a perfect world, well, you won't run the gas plant when renewal is available. So that's how the swap takes place.
So in 2030, there's going to be enough solar to make it swapped out?
Yes.
Where is the next solar project going up at? And how much megawatts is it going to generate?
Well, there's one going on Lansing landfill. Like Lansing Road, a big one there. There's one going on Comfort Street. There's one going on the corner of Ingersoll and Grand River. And those are in our service territory. And then we're going into Chiwasi County. We have a hundred megawatts, eighty megawatts there, so.
Okay. So eighty, you know, I know you said some other little sites. So all of those sites are going to add up to surpass the amount that the natural gas makes up now? Proposed?
Based on runtime, yes. You can't use nameplate because that's, if the natural gas plant's a hundred-and-ten megawatts, you're assuming in your, well, I shouldn't say we're assuming. It would be incorrect to assume that it's going to run twenty-four-seven. It's going to run when the renewables aren't available.
I'll pass my time right now.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions, comments from council? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Gerson. When you asked, "We're looking at doing this gas plant," did you look at other avenues before we settled on the gas plant?
Yes, we did. It's called an all-source RFP. That's where we invited anybody, really nationally, to submit proposals on the best way to meet our energy portfolio. They looked at the mix, they looked at our climate, where we're geographically located, and they submitted approximately a hundred proposals. We evaluated the ones that fit this area the best, along with our cost was based into that. The pricing was based into that, too. We had twelve public hearings for people that we, I was looking at. Yeah, twelve public hearings that folks could present or talk or get questions answered.
And this is gas plant number three, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Are you able to commit to us that we won't see another gas plant?
Be highly unlikely.
That makes me a little nervous.
I doubt if the Board Water and Light would be able to build another one because of the required environmental regulations require carbon capture, which makes it cost prohibitive.
Ninety percent carbon capture?
Yes.
Okay.
That drives the cost up to where it's not practical to build, so that might be a little better comfort level for you.
And then I don't see any wind, maybe I missed it from Councilmember Jackson, but do we not have any wind coming in the next five years?
Right now, we have extensive wind portfolio up in the thumb area, and it's been problematic trying to get licensing, to get permits. Now, hopefully, the change in the regulatory environment where local municipalities don't have as much control over it will make it easier. But we haven't been able, the last two, even three wind farms we looked, couldn't get the zoning permitting.
And then last question I have is, are we still, I'm just picking up something. Are we still getting electricity from DTE, who I believe burns coal?
They do. They're kind, yes, we do. But that's in the process of being converted to natural gas, so they're getting off the coal. We have a contract with them through the life of the plant.
And on Belle Isle, right?
Belle River, yes.
Belle River, okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any additional questions from the council? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. It has to do with your, one of your last answers. You mentioned that there will probably not be. Highly unlikely. A new gas plant because you have to do carbon capture. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
So what's the reason for carbon capture?
To reduce emissions from the plant.
Emissions from the plant. So emissions from the plant, wouldn't that indicate that it is not a clean energy if you have to have a law that requires carbon capture?
Well, the batteries, the, where they mine batteries from, batteries, is that clean? Is the nuclear fission clean? Every technology has its drawbacks. That's why I'm not going to get in the tit-for-tat on that.
Okay. So since new plants will require carbon capture, isn't it true that our current plants and the proposed plant would not have carbon capture?
Correct.
So you may not remember, but I'll go back to one of my last questions. So you may not remember, but I'll go back to one of my last questions. When I asked you, did you study the effects that the emissions will have from the rice plant and the environment?
Eagle is the one that sets the policies and the requirements, and we comply with what the state of Michigan has asked us to do.
Right.
We assume they have studied this because they're the governing body. They set the rules and regulations.
And that's why they made the law that says they have to have carbon capture.
Not on rice units.
Not on, excuse me?
You don't need carbon capture on rice units.
Is that why you did a rice unit instead of something else?
No, because of the quick response time to help offset the renewable intermittence.
Interesting. So you won't give me whether or not natural gas is a fossil fuel or a renewable? You don't know what percentage?
Well, it's not a renewable.
I know it's not.
Oh, because you just said that I wouldn't give you whether it's a fossil fuel or renewable. It is not a renewable.
So then that just leads it to the obvious, that it's a dirty fossil fuel, and-
Those are your words again.
Okay, natural gas is a fossil fuel that emits emissions and is not clean and healthy for people. Is that only my words, or is that just knowledge?
Those are your words right now. There's five different types of gas out there. There's clean gas, and you even said, are you talking about brown grass, gas, green gas? What are you talking?
Well, I'm talking about natural gas. I'm talking about what we're all talking about. And I was just trying to see if you knew what we're talking about, too.
Well, I know exactly what we're talking about.
All right, because everything I read and everything you say, Board Water and Light says, not you, but even though mostly it's your authoring, is that we're moving to clean energy, we're gonna be fifty percent by twenty thirty, and we're, we're the number one utility in Michigan, and we're the best because we care about the environment. Look what we're doing. We're doing, we're doing a little battery, doing that, and, oh, by the way, natural gas, but that's cleaner burning than coal, right? Right?
I would assume, uh, for the most part. It's not as generic as you're saying. There's coal plants that have new technology that are clean. Not saying I want anything to do with them, I'm just saying that those are two general statements to, for me to chime in. It's that simple.
Okay. I'm just still amazed that you, as the, what's the title? General manager of the utility and honestly the one that makes the decisions, don't, let's not act like the board of commissioners really makes the decisions. They pretty much agree with everything. But I'm so surprised that you don't know where we're at, public utility, where we're at as far as the percentage of renewable versus our goal of fifty percent by twenty thirty.
I know exactly where we're at, but you're gonna get in in writing, not here, so that you can pick it apart.
What's there to pick apart if it's a fact?
Just like you've just been doing on coal and natural gas.
No, coal and natural-
Councilman Jackson, let's not get back and forth a little-
Well, I, I just, I just can't believe I can't get an answer about where we're at on percentage.
You can't, you just can't get it right now.
We'll get that answer. I'll make sure you get it as well. I don't wanna go tit-for-tat here. I have-
Well, this is our one hour of questions, and then we're just gonna have to wait till next time we get to see the meeting to get any answers, so go ahead.
If you have some questions that you wanna continue asking, please do so. But he, he did answer a couple of those questions already. I just don't wanna go back and forth. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Okay, a, a couple of mine were, were answered. I just wanna go through, um, some of the comments that were asked earlier regarding like the fly ash pond. Now, I remember you coming to council, um, in a previous meeting, mentioning about boron levels.
Yes.
Were those levels, did they exceed normal, uh, levels in a regular, uh, environment?
Let me, uh, be real careful on how I answer because there's private wells out there that have exceeded the, uh, boron levels that are recommended. There's not a boron cutoff, but there, there's, there's some, uh, you know, it's not like a regulation that you're gonna have X amount of boron. But there's some best practice that you shouldn't have this amount of boron. And there's some of those wells out there that exceed the level for an infant. Now, that has been ninety percent determined. It'll take another year. It is naturally occurring. The Eagles is there, the Public Health Department, and another year of testing. The, the levels that were down gradient from our facility were lower than where it, well, so you, you, does that make sense to you?
Yes, so, so I guess what I'm, what I'm gathering is that the fly ash didn't create any more higher levels of boron than would occur in potential other places naturally?
We are very close to definitively being able to say that. Right now, we're at the ninety percent that the water in those wells that have higher boron, boron levels is naturally occurring.
Okay, and then, so when do you think you'll be able to definitively answer that?
Well, it's, the modeling takes a lot of time. We've, uh, put a lot of wells in, and we continue to model them, and you have to do testing every, uh, so many weeks, like twelve, sixteen weeks, I'm not exactly sure. And so the state requires you to get, uh, detailed, uh, you know, readings over a long period of time, so we probably have about a year left. We're like a year and a half into it. But right now, we haven't seen a single indicator that says that it's coming out of the Erickson Ash Pond, which is, it doesn't have ash in it anymore. It was removed years ago, except for a diminutive amount that was just recently removed. But, uh, you know, we, we wanna make sure, and so, and all the testing that's done by a third party, the Board Water and Light doesn't do that testing.
All right, well, thank you. Look forward to hearing, uh, the results on that, another year, year and a half. Uh, see that we're still on track to meet the state goals, renewable by twenty, twenty thirty?
Yes.
Um, and then the only other question I, I had was about the wind portfolio. And it's my understanding that more, more of them that are, are getting turned down than they are getting put up. No one wants to see a turbine in their backyard, so to speak.
We do prefer solar over wind because it's available when you need it, um, summer. Uh, it has better performance, uh, than wind. Wind comes in what we call the shoulder months, spring and fall, where you have excess energy already, so it, it doesn't, uh, the payback is there. But we do own a lot of, our, we do receive, uh, a lot of wind through PPA agreements up in, uh, here on in Tuscalo County.
All right, well, thank you. Um, I don't have any further questions. Any, any further questions from council? Councilwoman Pallavani?
Thank you, President Garza. I just have one brief question. Um, and it, um, speaks to something that we heard throughout public comment, that there is going to be a proposed rate increase or a rate increase that is coming up shortly. Um, and the number seven percent was put out there. So I guess my question is, would a impending rate increase be seven percent? How did you get to that percentage as a rate increase? And, um, I, keeping in mind that we have, um, a lot of residents out there who currently struggle to pay their utility bills, what is, how does Board of Water and Light work with their customers to ensure that they can keep their power on?
The, um, recommended rate increase is going to be seven percent. It's a combination of the clean energy projects and inflation. Uh, but it has to be approved by the commissioners, and there's an upcoming meeting for that for customers that wanna come out and speak. For those that wanna, uh, to help, uh, keep their power on, we have multiple agencies that we work with, uh, to keep our customers, uh, power on and help them pay their bills. We raised, uh, we were able to get them over a million and a half dollars over the, the winter time to help keep their electricity on. We are very sensitive to the, to the rates, uh, so, but those, uh, rate increase recommendations don't come lightly.
Okay, well, well, thank you. Appreciate you guys being here and presenting. Thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, just for the people that are just getting here, just wanna let you know that we do have one more discussion action item prior to our seven o'clock start of council. Looks like we'll probably get started a little late. But with that, we are to discussion action, uh, item C, resolution for property tax poverty exemption guidelines. And I believe we have our city assessor, Jennifer Seizberger, here. Please come on down to the well. Thanks for being here this evening. Awesome. Okay, so, um, I do wanna, uh, just read this quickly. So this was referred to Committee on Ways and Means at June twenty-fourth. Uh, the administration didn't make council aware of it till July sixteenth, that, that, about the July sixteenth deadline till July first. So that being said, there is a need to discharge out of Ways and Means Committee before Committee the whole can consider action tonight. Okay, all right. Well, thanks for being here. If you'd like to go ahead and proceed, and then we can open it up for questions.
There it is. Good. So this is a resolution for the poverty exemption. It is required by law to have a resolution, uh, on the guidelines on how it will be instituted equitably amongst all the applicants.
Do we have any questions regarding, uh, the resolution from council? Seeing no questions? Tamara, uh, vice chair of Committee on Ways and Means Committee, looking for a motion then?
Yes, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the property tax poverty exemption guideline.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, comments from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further business on the agenda tonight. We are adjourned at seven oh two PM. A five-minute recess, and then we'll start with our city council meeting.